All right, I'll call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhug.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Your peers.
He is excused.
Trustee Kessel.
Also excused.
Trustee Shipley.
Yo.
Clerks Slater, present.
Supervisor Lesbrunz. Present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of today's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda today as written and presented.
Spark.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
I have it.
Posed. Motion carried. Article four fiscal year 2023 Township Board Budget Workshop. Manager Swayze, we'll turn it over to you.
So I had doubled the amount of slides I had in my presentation. I figured we could stay here for another couple hours, but.
But you'll talk four times.
No, so no presentation today. Really what I just wanted to do is to go over the changes that were requested by the township board, as well as the few budgets that were outstanding. So I thought maybe I would just take ten or fifteen minutes here to kind of go through those. You guys can see where the changes were made. And then just kind of open it up for discussion. So I'm going to start on page two where the first change was made. So you'll recall that at the previous meeting, the board made the request to dissolve the supervisor slash manager, clerk, and treasurer department budgets and move them to either into the township board budget or into the administrative budget. So on page two, the township board appropriations, you'll see where this, these changes are first made. We created new line items for the wages for the township supervisor, township clerk, township treasurer. And then the associated costs with those officials were put into this budget as well. So you know, we upped the line item for education, up the line item for mileage, for board expense account, for the cellphone and data, all those things that were associated with the supervisor, treasurer, and clerk got merged into this budget as well. And then there was one special project in the supervisor manager budget, which was the township strategic plan implementation contract. We moved that into the township board budget as well. So then if you look at the next three budgets, the supervisor budget, the clerk budget, and the treasurer budget, those while they appear in the budget document, because there's 2022 budgets associated with them. For 2023, those are zeroed out. And my intention is to keep that into the actual published budget document with an explanation as to why there's no budget for those three departments in 2023. And then if you go to page five, the starting of the administrative budget, this is where all of the non-elected official personnel expenses were put into. So this is now the largest budget in the general fund. So between the first two line items, seven oh two and seven oh two dash zero zero one, you have the manager, you have the management assistant, you have the human resources director, the senior accountant, the manager of treasury services, and the manager of administrative services. So all of those employees and all of their associated costs are now in the administrative department. So if you go through and look at some of the line items, like for, again, for education expense and mileage and all the, that's, that's all been boosted up. The the budget line items that were associated with those are part of the budget items that were associated with those employees have been moved into the administrative budget as well. So I did hear back from our auditing firm. They had no problem with the changes that were made as a chart of accounts issue. They just said, make sure that you actually reflected in the budget. So they approved of it. I did ask legal counsel as well. I haven't heard back from them, but I got to imagine that our auditor is okay with it. Legal counsel is going to be okay with it as well. You guys have any questions about those changes that were made?
Well, I think it probably clarifies for the average citizen exactly what's where. I think that's a good job.
Yeah, really good. It makes a lot more sense.
All right. So quite honestly, that was the, the major change that happened in the budget. Just one thing to note, you know, we did have the conversation, we moved up the cost of living increases from three point three to four percent. That is reflected in the budget. The merit-based raises have not been assigned yet, so those still appear in those assignable salary line items. So my hope is when the budget comes in front of the board at the fourteenth, I'll have the final recommendations back from the department heads, and that can be allocated appropriately. One of the requests that trustee, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, one of the requests that trustee Nordic had was that all of the special project line items be individualized, so that there is only one special project for each special project line item. So anywhere that appears in the budget, that change was made as well. So we can start out on page seven. You see now that there's two, at the very top, there's two special project line items in the administrative budget now. The communications consultant and then BSNA cloud implementation. So eighty-four for that, and then forty for the, excuse me, cloud implementation.
And Did you talk to Aiden and find out how they were doing with Sabo, how they had cut back?
So Plainfield Township? Yeah, so Ada doesn't use them. So Plainfield Township, basically, their Sabo representative had left. And instead of, so their hunter left Sabo, and instead of hiring, instead of Sabo hiring a new person, Plainfield Township decided to make the jump and hire their own internal consultant. So I, I communicated a little bit back and forth with Cameron. He's kind of putting together all of the documents that, you know, he used to make that pitch to the board. So I figured at some point we'll have that, that conversation.
Because I know a couple of years ago, we bumped communications up. I think it was for COVID. We increased that budget. And I think now I'd like to bring that back down. And then I think this is a great time to start pulling back some of this in-house. So reduce the budget even more. It's a conversation I want to have.
Which page, which?
Page seven, special projects, communication, very first line. Yep.
Oh.
Well, we did, it was quite a bump when we did it, but we're not getting rid of it and COVID's kind of gone.
Is that when all? Yeah, that was when we had to do a bunch of equipment. Zoom stuff.
So I guess I, I don't recall actually bumping it for COVID. So at, at one point we bumped, I mean, Sabo just increased their rates. So it went up, but we've always had basically Hunter, we budget for Hunter for twenty hours. And then there's backend work to, you know, Sabo and the, the higher up executives gives us some work, we budget about ten hours a month for that. So I know that, that twenty hour, ten hour split's really been the way it's been designed since two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, but the costs have gone up.
So.
I just think at eighty-four thousand, we should start looking at a in-house employee.
I, I was gonna ask the same thing, Ben. What is the possibility one through ten, being ten and being excellent, of finding a quality person for in-house communication like one hundred?
I mean, there's definitely people out there that, that do it. So I think that it would be, as long as we design the position accordingly, and we pay accordingly, I think we'll get a, get a good candidate.
Or you can talk to Plainfield and see how they went through it and all that.
Yeah, so the only, the only caveat that I would have out, out there again is that, you know, there's a reason sometimes you use an engineering consultant or a legal consultant in this because they have the, the different expertise, right? So when you're buying into that, you're buying expert, experts in all these different areas. So when you hire a person, you know, you want to get that person as, as well-rounded as possible, and they may have some expertise areas. I would caution, and I know other communities, when Wyoming went away from Sabo and went to their own internal person, and I'm, I'm assuming, you know, Plainfield did this as well, is they still leave a little money in there for, you know, some communications that may not be the expertise of the person that's coming in. The thing that come to, that comes to mind for me is emergency crisis communications, right? So you bring somebody in and all of a sudden you have a, a major crisis in the township where you need some, some expertise and somebody that has some more connections. You probably still want to maintain though, that relationship with a consultant to be able to tap into.
Makes sense.
Question. So when we hired Sabo initially about four or five years ago, I remember their hourly rate was quite a bit lower than some other firms, but I, the number forty-two or forty-four sticks in my mind, dollars per hour. So even if that's gone up to, that's still fifty thousand dollars a year. So that is still quite a bit higher than that. Do you know what their hourly rate is now?
Uh, we approved that two years ago. I'd have to go back and take a look at that.
Because that still works out. Even if you pay him a thousand dollars a week, that's still fifty-two thousand a year. There, that's quite a discrepancy. So I'm curious.
Yep, I can look back into that.
They did fantastic on the fire department, especially I'm thinking that when we had done all the work behind the scenes, but from a PR perspective, I didn't do that great of a job during that meeting, the communications of it, and then try to think, so the fire station, everything, projects they handle, they do a really good job.
True.
So I definitely agree about needing an outside consultant. What do they, so what are we using them for on a regular basis? E-newsletter, paper newsletter?
News releases, special events.
Special events like?
It's like when we do a, we use the, the groundbreaking for the, the fire station, so that they really organize that top to bottom. They sent out the press releases, they got the, the news coverage in. You know, when we did Heritage Day, they really focused on getting the information out there, trying to get the, the news stations to, to pick it up. And Facebook mess messaging is, is a big one, but we are trying to integrate our staff into that as well, right? So for example, the, the newsletter is a, just an administrative process where you got to collect all the articles from everybody and organize them. So we started using Jessica to kind of, you know, we don't want to pay, you don't want to use our hunter for twenty dollars an hour to, you know, to get all that stuff in and organize it. So Jessica's been trying to take on some of that, that I don't want to say lower level communication items, but you know, trying to do some more of that administrative stuff so that Hunter can focus more on the, the high-end things.
Sure. I mean, I think they've done a good job. I'm not saying they haven't done a good job. I'm glad.
So communication is one of those thing, those things too, where it snowballs, right? So each time you do it, you want to do it a little bit better. And so again, we have Hunter for twenty hours a week, you know, it wouldn't, it, we would have no problem if we brought in a communication consultant, having them work forty hours a week for the thing that's going on. Just trying to do some of that proactive stuff as well.
Is, is he doing the photos or?
He does do a lot of photos, yep. So there, there are days like when we had the big snowfall in November, you know, we told him, just take three hours, go out, go through the whole township, update our photo library. So we start needing, you know, quote unquote, stock photos for our newsletter, our releases or anything like that. We have Cascade-specific photos rather than photos that we're getting off the internet from somewhere.
Which makes a difference. It's nice.
Yeah, one of the things that's been really useful, and it was prompted by John, because about a year or two ago, John said, what are we getting for our money? And they kind of came back with a really nice summary. I think it's quarterly. They put it in the, it's in the packets.
Yeah.
And you look through the package and you go, what are we hitting? How are the residents reacting to Facebook or whatever it is that we put out there? And that, that's been really useful to see, you know, to get that analysis of what are we getting for our money? So i- if we bring it in-house, we don't want to lose that either. We, you know, we want to continue with that, see how, how effective our communications are.
Those video shoots for local businesses, is that out of a general fund or is that DDA funds?
So right now, all of their cost does come out of the general fund. There is an opportunity to parse that out into the different funds if we, if we wanted to do that. So that may be a, a, a good way to stretch those dollars.
Because those are pretty time-consuming, right?
So it probably takes, you know, it's probably two hours of prep, two hours on the day, and then probably double that to, you know, finalize the video. So it's probably eight hours every time that we do one of those.
Because I know they're nice, but I had heard from a couple business, local businesses who say that it's a lot of that you could get a similar, as much bang for your buck with something much simpler on Instagram or just marketing that's a lot cheaper. I, that's the only thing, and it's nothing against Sabo who's doing it. I just think it's kind of a overkill for maybe the, what businesses are getting in return.
Yeah.
Even though they're fun to see, I just don't think that people are looking at township websites and that kind of stuff for local. I don't know. I think it's not the most efficient.
I guess I'll be the bad guy, but I'd like to trim this back this year. I'd like to wait for your report from Plainfield and what, how they did it. And then I would like to start trimming this back. I think this is excessive for.
Yeah, so I guess my only case is that, you know, that number is probably the number, whether we do it internally or externally. Because once you bring in, you know, employee and you're paying them the benefits and all that kind of stuff, you know, eighty-four is probably actually a little bit light for in-house professional communications person. So.
My next question.
You know, if we, if we want to start the process of, you know, figuring out what that next iteration is, you know, I think that's something that we can work, work on. I wouldn't trim any money out of the budget, just because you know, you're going to need that, whether it's, whether you're paying it to Sabo or you're paying it to a township employee.
Fair point.
Good points.
Who has control over the in-house? We but we have control over Sabo.
We have control of Sabo.
Okay. We do.
I think we like to play devil's advocate.
I do.
Depends on how many hours in the day there are.
Thank you.
Yeah, so continuing on that discussion, you know, we did parse out all of these special projects line items. So if you go to page eight, again, at the bottom of the planning department, you know, have those two different line items for what was in there. You have the special projects for the tactical urbanism project that they'll potentially do in partnership with the DDA. We do have some money in here for master, potential master plan consultant as well. The, the planning commission probably isn't far enough along in that conversation to decide whether or not they would actually use a consultant, or if it would be simple enough for us to do in-house. But the money is, is available if they do want to make that recommendation. If you go down to the parks committee, just want to mention again, we are planning a Parks Director for two thousand and twenty-three. The committee had a good conversation about that this morning. They put together a subcommittee of the Parks Committee to start putting together a job description and some recruitment materials, just like our capital improvements at the township. Just because something gets included in the budget doesn't mean all of a sudden there's now a Parks Director in the township. So once that job description is done and the recommendations made by the Parks Committee, that would come in front of the board for official approval before it, it actually goes out for advertisement.
Who would do the, who would handle the bidding process for that at the board level?
Bidding process for.
They did want to do a consultant for the master plan. That would still be the board making that, right?
Yeah, yeah. So we'd probably do something similar to what we're doing with the, the pathways, right? So we have the, the pathway out for bids right now. It'll come back and the pathway committee will review it, but then they'll make a recommendation of who to award it to, to the board. So we'd probably do the same thing if the planning commission wanted to bring in a consultant. We would allow them to kind of review bids and make a recommendation, but ultimately the board would have to approve a contract.
Is that what was done with, was it Williams and Works for the current master plan? Through the planning commission?
That's the process that I follow for almost all of those consultants, you know, whether it came through the standing committees when we had those, though those are part of the board, so.
I think the board should be selecting as much as possible directly.
All right. So one thing that I did want to talk about, based on the Parks Committee meeting this morning, is in the capital outlay section. So on page nine, the last line item there, capital outlay land improvement. You remember, we talked about it the last meeting, that they're looking at a development for the Wyclef property. So at the meeting today, they've basically delayed coming to the board with a proposed plan for the Wyclef property until July. Kind of worked through the process. I actually missed that part of the meeting, so. But the long and short of it is, is that they're waiting until July to even come to the board with a, a proposed development for that. Chances are construction's not going to happen in two thousand and twenty-three. So I don't know if the board wanted to leave this in here as a placeholder, if you want to remove it for the time being with the idea that it's probably in the twenty, twenty, twenty-four budget. But at least in, in my opinion, based on that timeline, a two thousand and twenty-three construction for any potential project is unlikely.
Which line I?
The bottom nine, one oh one, nine oh one, nine seven four, capital outlay land improvement.
Oh, gotcha.
I think I, I agree with Ben that if we leave it there now, it's a placeholder, but also there may be some free construction expenses. I would, I would be hesitant to quickly.
So they're putting it off six months because they want to settle with it?
So I don't know. I mean, it may, Grace, you were there at the part I wasn't, you know, so they have some things that are, I don't want to say they're more important to them, but they're probably more timely right now. They really want to get a person director on, and get that process going. They really want to start the process of looking at the millage. So it just may be a indication that there's too many things on their plate right now. And once they get those things going, they can come back and, and relook at it. But all I heard was that they're, they're delaying coming to the, the board for a, with a potential recommendation until July at the earliest.
Thank you.
What I heard too, there's the, so the church owns the other half of that, right?
Right.
And I guess they're, they're still they're looking at like a rose garden type thing, like real close to the property line. And so a couple of people, as a moneymaker, and a couple of people mentioned might be waiting to see a little bit what the church moves are, plus there's a, maybe a drainage issue and all that tree of heaven that invades a species that's kind of, they'll know better in July. Taken care of. So, but the plan was, um, they have the written plan. It wasn't so much fighting about what the plan looks like, more just like a few little things to make sense.
Yeah. Just one other item in that capital outlay too. So the, the third from the bottom, the capital outlay furniture fixtures and equipment. There's some buildings and grounds equipment in here, but we also talked about filling out the rest of the columbarium pedestals in the Thirty Street Cemetery. So we originally put that in the budget at a hundred thousand dollars. Looks like it'll be about sixty thousand dollars. Chrissy did a good job of getting some quotes. So we did roll out that forty thousand dollars. So that was, that was taken out. So then if you go to page ten, you can see that now, we've got the, we're still planning on spending down a little bit of fund balance in, in two thousand and twenty-three, even before we do the transfer for the fire station project, but it's less than a hundred thousand dollars now. So in really good shape for the operating budget, considering the amount of one-time expenditures that are in the budget. Any questions about the, yep?
Um. And I don't know if it would be the capital outlay. So with the Parks structure, Parks Committee direction and the strategic plan, but if the appropriate to just maybe make a line or add a line for possible acquisition, property acquisitions. I'm just wondering, like, so that we're not necessarily anything specifically or has to be used, but so that we're in a position to take advantage of if opportunities do arise before the parks millage?
Yeah, so what the Parks Committee had asked me to do was, so what'll come as part of, part of the budget approval next Wednesday is commitment of fund balances as well. So really what the Parks Committee is asking of the township board is to commit a million dollars of fund balance to future property acquisition, which would accomplish, essentially accomplish the same thing.
Okay. It's just in a different section?
So it'd actually be a resolution. So the resolution coming from the board, and they'll say, the board has, you know, seven million dollars of fund balance, and we commit a million dollars to few, future project, the future land acquisition. There'll be a recommendation from me, some of that be committed to unfunded liability in our pension fund. A couple, a couple of those items, so that if the process does come up and there's a piece of land available that either we want to buy outright, or we want to potentially apply for a grant and there's a match or something like that, then we have the official record that shows, yes, the township does have a million dollars that we're planning on committing for property acquisition. And then if, you know, so say the millage gets passed or something happens and we decide not to use that, you know, the board can uncommit that by resolution as well.
Perfect.
I think that adds to the transparency. If some way we're really get involved and say, how come you're hiding this money where you did?
It gives them, it gives us an opportunity to, to show the public, you know, why we do have these savings accounts in our funds. So we have this money, but saving it for a specific, specific reason. Whereas if you just have seven million dollars, you know, then you start to have those questions from the public about where you're spending this funds.
Cool.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm going to skip quite a bit. A lot of these remaining funds weren't changed. Or if they were changed, the only change was to add the additional cost of living increase to the wage line items. But we're going to go now to page twenty-one. So page twenty-one and page twenty-two are the requested budgets for the Larraway Lake SAD and the Thornapple River SAD. So these are pretty basic. A lot of this is just money in, money out. For the Thornapple River SAD, they are starting to accumulate a, a fund balance, and with the idea that at some point they're going to want to do a a project besides weed control. It sounds like their first focus is going to be on navigability on the Thornapple River and safety markings. So we spent quite a lot of time last night talking about that. There's actually a state statute that you have to follow when you're marking navigation channels on bodies of the state. So we started to review that, and we're hoping to have a contractor come in to start talking to the group about that at the January or February meeting. So you know, the Larraway Lake one, it's, it's really simple, right? They're just taking their money and spending it on weed control on Larraway Lake. So for Thornapple, they do have a couple other line items in here. Sixty thousand dollars for the weed control. Obviously, that's the big one. So they'd put five, ten thousand dollars in here for contractual services. So one of the things they committed to, to for safety is removing potentially having to, in emergency situations, remove stuff from the, the river. You know, sometimes they get docks that break off and float down or trees that block the navigation. So they did want to have some money in there for emergency cleaning of the river if they need to do that. And then that engineering line item is again to figure, to begin to figure out that safety issue. But you see, if the, the budget holds tight for two thousand and twenty-three, they'll start to have a little bit of money in that fund to start looking at some of those other projects.
Oh, Ben, any expenses of that SAD encourage comes before the board still, doesn't it? For payment or approval?
Yeah, so like the, the contracts, or the weed contract came in front of, in front of the board. We did approve that for three years, so it won't come back again. But yeah, anything they're doing.
I know there's a couple of guys I would like to spend a couple million dollars piece of it.
Well, and again, they are completely limited to the money that they're bringing in through the SAD unless they specifically ask the board for it, right?
How about the legal fees from doing that whole process? Did that get?
It did, yeah. So we kept track of that and took that out of the two thousand and twenty-two budget. So as said, administrative, administrative line item.
Got it, okay.
And then we bumped that down for two thousand and twenty-three because the process is done. So that five thousand dollars might actually be a little bit high, but again, that's one of those line items where if they need to use it, it's there. If they don't, it just rolls into the fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay.
Um. Looking at page twenty-five, so this actually, this sheet accidentally didn't get updated in the packet that I sent out to you last night. So the one that I passed out today does have the update on it. And again, it just breaks out those special project line items. So the DDA had one big special project line item, and now they've got five. One for the lighting and decor, one for the tactical urbanism, one for flowers and planting, one for PR marketing promotion, and one for special event. Uh, one for the lighting and decor, one for the tactical urbanism, one for flowers and planting, one for P R marketing promotion, and one for special events.
What's tactical urbanism again, please?
So those are those projects where we tried to test out a project before we actually do the project, right? So you're using hay bales and temporary markings or whatever you need to, you know, demonstrate, you know, a. You know, pedestrian crossing bump out or reduction in travel lanes or or something like that.
Ben, what are for D D A, what are the membership and dues and education?
Uh, just conferences and. Memberships for the D D A Director, so I believe she belongs to Mita. Uh, and the the Mich, there's a Michigan Downtown Association and then there's a a National Downtown Association. Um, and then for conferences for that position. Then if we go to. The last two pages. So on page thirty-two, uh, we have our cares ARPA fund. Uh, and again, we budgeted some expenditures out of this for next year. Uh, so in capital improvements, we have the Cascade Road Bridge Project, uh, budgeted a quarter million. And then we do have a transfer audit here uh, to the fire station number one project. Uh, so with those expenditures, at the end of next year, still have um, just north of eight hundred thousand dollars. In this fund uh, for other um, potential projects. Again, just a reminder that that money would have to be allocated by the end of two thousand and twenty-four and spent by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. And then on the next page, page thirty-three, this is our uh, Fire Station One Construction Budget. So uh, we'll note that, you know, we had the discussion um, last. Meeting about the split of what's coming from the general fund and what's coming from the ARPA fund. Uh, we talked about four million dollars. We really need to have a plan for four and a half million dollars in there. Uh, we still have a contact construction contingency. Uh, the hope is that we don't have to use that construction contingency. Um, but so we would make these transfers in million dollar increments. Uh, but if for some reason that trend, that contingency has to be used, uh, we need to have that in the budget, so. Uh, and really, you want to look at that two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three budget kind of together for the whole project. Uh, because, you know, the even though we have two different budget years, it's one project, so. Uh, I'll admit a lot of this is a is a guess as to what our bills are going to be at the end of two thousand twenty-two. But if you look at it holistically together, um, that's the the cost of the project. So those are the changes that were made um, from the last budget and happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions on the building department fund. Even though we bumped up the rates a year and a half ago. To build a contingency fund. Yeah, how much is in that fund?
So how much like the fund balance? Yeah, so. We go to page. Twenty-nine. Those are the the fund balance numbers, so. Um, you know, we had a much better construction year in two thousand and twenty-two than we had anticipated, so. Uh, looks like uh, probably adding about eight hundred thousand dollars to that fund balance uh, for next year. The addition to the fund balance really only planned on, you know, twelve thousand dollars, but again, that's, you know. Nobody knows what the market's going to do, right? So if the building. Building industry finally crashes, you know, we could start drawing out of that fund balance. If we have another banner year like we did this year and the uh. And the construction industry uh, continues to uh, ward off the inflation and the economic downturn. Then could be in addition there as well. So I did talk to Brian. We had that conversation last time. Uh, about kind of what that quote-unquote escrow or uh, the book of, you know, uninspected permits are so far, so. It's about two point two million dollars. Uh, he's got all the documents put together for me, so uh, when we do the. We do the commitments for the building fund, you'll have all those documents to see kind of what that open book of permits says right now.
So that's money that we've taken in that we haven't yet provided the services for?
Correct.
So it looks about two and a half million dollars a year to support that department.
Correct.
And we're carrying three point six million. I think that's a little excessive. I would like to. Where is the excess on this? Where is this money stored?
Bank accounts.
Just flat bank account.
Well, no, so uh, Ken and Oksana do a good job of putting that money in. The investments that we're allowed to invest in, it's typically CDs. Uh, the laws of uh, Michigan donors allow us to. Uh, do much more than that, but Oxana has been parking excess fund balance funds into typically one to two-year CDs.
I guess I don't mind budgeting a one-year. Contingency fund. But I don't want to just build this thing up. And then use it all just. To keep the thing afloat. You know, it seems to me that if we're going to do that, all of our partners should be helping keep it afloat, not just. And I would like to see the excess funds go into a new fund. Called the Cascade Residence Recreational Fund. Make some improvements to parks or land or. Uh, versus just have this laying around for slush fund.
So we do have a legal opinion that that is illegal. Um, so I've had, it was done by our previous law firm, so I'm asking them to take a look at it and update it, but. Uh, based on the laws, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be allowed to do that.
Yeah, I would like the legal opinion from our current.
What about changing? And is it because of the state law or is it our fee structure that we have with those other?
State law, so the state law says that any funds that you collect for inspection, inspecting the buildings can only go towards. Um, the costs of conducting those inspections.
Is that for power inspections or is that for the business and doing all the other townships?
That's for, so for for this one, it would be the department, so because we collect those funds from the other. Um, communities, they can be used to inspection program for those other communities as well.
I have a problem with this.
Makes perfect sense, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll see what the legal opinion comes back, but I don't want to be in the business of just banking money to use for. For bad times.
Does, does, will the analysis include looking at? If these structures can be. Changed that would in some way, and I'm not saying specifics, possibly benefit. Residents.
So the the original opinion's pretty dry, so I have asked a couple other questions like that. What are? What are our opportunities? What have you seen in in other places? But there is some case law uh, in regards to this too, the uh, city of Troy got sued by the. Michigan Home Builders Association because they were using. Building Department funds for things other than building inspections, so. Part of, part of that, that part of that was in the original analysis as well.
I would think that holds true with most, most funds. If you click for for something, you can't shuffle the money around.
Right, so then, all right, does it also include looking at how you define administrative costs and if we can err on the side of making those? Heavier. Which are then in turn kind of lighten the townships load a little bit. Taxpayers. Tricky. Thank you.
No problem.
Otherwise, the million dollars is just going to sit there until the township ends.
Or we have an economic. So the idea again was to, you know, for these, these, you know, these eighteen month to two-year, you know, cycles. Uh, the problem is, is that it's just been. It's just been up, I mean, since two thousand and eight. The idea is that, you know, your, your buildings, your building fees, your building. Permit fees kind of cycle every six years or so where you have a down year and the idea was to not to have to lay off a bunch of. But with it continuing to go up. Yeah, I I would agree that the fund balance is getting to a point where it's hard for us to justify continuing to add to that. But it's hard for us to find anything to spend it on either, so.
Yeah, and that's tricky because i- in theory, if you don't have work to do. Then the natural conclusion is then people, if then a business lays off. Job, you know, employees, so and this has nothing to do with where we're at right now or any, the building departments, but. It's unrealistic to think that we'll just have a cushion to keep people when there's no work for them. And I'm not saying that has nothing to do with the reality that, you know, what we have now, but. That cushion doesn't really exist and, I mean, to some extent, but does that make sense? Like, what kind of padding cushion are you looking at? There's, that's kind of.
Yeah, again, it was, it was to pad against, you know, the the typical downward cycle, right? So if if you have a one-year downward cycle and you get rid of all of your inspectors, because, you know, there's nothing for them to do that year. And then all of a sudden, you know, it turns, everybody's building again. Building inspectors are hard to get back. Uh, because they go out, they'll basically go back out in the field and start building again. Uh, whereas your inspectors, they have to have certain amount of uh, credentials and continuing education and all that, so the idea is. Right, there's never no work, but if their inspections go down from, you know, hey, I'm doing my, you know. Somewhere between eight and twelve inspections a day, and now I'm only doing six inspections, where you can keep them around until that goes up again. If you have continued years of, you know, hey, I'm only doing four inspections today, I'm doing six inspections today, I'm doing two inspections today. At some point, that's the new norm, and then you have to make those decisions, whether it's through, you know, people, you know, retire through attrition. Or you do have to get rid of some of those positions. So no, the the idea wasn't be able to keep the department, you know, running in perpetuity in a downtime. It was to be able to weather, you know, the typical cycle of uh, of the building industry.
So right now, we have over a year and a half's worth of operating money. If we never had an inspection for that full year and a half before, we would be down to zero.
But that benefits the employees who that I want to get, I want to apply to the building department in that case. That puts us back to the weird, the tricky situation of being a township where you're not allowed to earn money, but you're operating a. In theory, the type of business that is meant to make money. Is that, it's just tricky, right? Or am I missing?
So I would argue that it's, it's, it's not intended to make money. Uh, in fact, we've particularly. Not made this an enterprise fund in our, you know, annual report because. The laws are very clear that you can't profit from, from this. Uh, you're able to cover your expenses. So I I look at it similarly as I do to a water sewer fund, right? So if a township runs a water sewer fund. Uh, you have lots of money that's coming in, right? So Ada Township runs their own uh, water sewer fund. They've got, you know, three million to four million dollars of water sewer fees that are coming in, but they have to use those water sewer fees. To provide water and sewer to those residents. They can't use those fees to. Um, you know, buy parks or whatnot, so you have a lot of. Communities that run their own water sewer utilities that have big fund balances as well to kind of weather emergency situations or whatnot.
But they're only servicing Ada.
Correct.
So it's just goofy because we're servicing other.
This is a for-profit business and there are private companies that do this exact thing for fifty-eight different communities. P C I out of door. P C I code inspections, they do fifty-eight separate communities as a private for-profit business. And we're doing the exact same thing, only saying we're not for profit.
The difference is when we're servicing other.
So those, those other businesses are technically their businesses, but they have to show some proof that we do, right? So they have to prove to the state that they're audited, that they're only using those fees to cover their. Inspection costs, right? Now their inspection costs may be that the C E O of that company makes a million dollars a year. Um, but you, they, they're, they're required to provide the same justifications that we are. If they got caught using those to. Buy a yacht out of business funds or something like that, they would get busted, just like the township potentially could get busted. We'd get our hands slapped, they'd go to jail.
And then, but then it seems like the kind of situation where it works great if you've got the right person running it, like Brian Wilson. But it could go downhill really quick and make, it's really dependent on having someone in there who. Who, what does he say? Threads the needle, but. The process is pretty loosey-goosey that there's a lot of potential for it to go downhill fast and who's on the hook for, you know. I mean, ultimately, it's a cascade township business. That's not a business. Very dependent on having someone in there that knows what they're doing and has the balance.
I will agree with you a thousand percent.
That makes me.
Brian does a great, a great job in the building department and he is a key reason why it's been so successful.
But, but you can't have a, a structure long-term that's dependent on a person so much. That makes me a little nervous.
I would argue that all our departments.
Same way. They rely on people.
Yeah, but businesses are, yeah, but ultimately, we're the ones running, then we're in charge of this business, so it's up to us.
And 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 this is all good news. This is not harming the residents at all. We're helping other communities. We're, we're very effective. And I think it's, it's a kudos to Cascade Township that we're so effective. I think it's, it's, it's really a, a bright star for us to be effective. Where we help other communities, we have a, a great service, and the point is that if we have a great person like Brian running it, that's, that's to our advantage.
If he's ever not, we'll find another one.
I just think it's set up wrong.
A weird setup.
We are Cascade Township is on the hook for all losses. None of our partners here, our customers have any skin in the game. When it goes downhill, they just keep getting their little twenty percent kickback. We make up the two hundred thousand dollars in loss or two million dollars in loss.
Yeah, but we also have the contingency that we can opt out within what, sixty days?
I think it's ninety days.
Ninety days, ninety days. So we can also, if we decide, Timmy, we don't want to do this anymore, we can opt out.
Yeah, but the bigger you get, the harder it is to, in theory, dismantle something. And I'm not saying we should at all, don't want to, but.
Right now, we have a good problem. It's, 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 we're, we're very effective and we have. Money and we have to keep it within that fund due to state laws.
Do our admin, so whatever we legitimately spend on admin, because we essentially have the whole building department staff and all, you know, overhead. What we charge to recoup that, is that part of our twenty percent?
So typically, what we've, what we've done to justify, because again, even the twenty percent that goes into the general fund, the twenty percent that goes to those customer communities. You have to justify that that is related to the building department as well, right? So typically, in the past, we've taken the. We've taken the path that we just need to make sure that we're justified, that that twenty percent can be traced back to costs related to running the building department. So after our conversation at the last meeting, I am taking a holistic look at. What are all of our administrative costs related to the building department? And if there is a justification for us getting more money from the fund. To do that, I think that's an opportunity for the board to consider. Um, it's just looking from my, from my point of view, it's a different mindset, rather trying to justify the twenty percent. It's a matter of figuring out what the actual costs are and seeing if that contribution matches up or not.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and does this mean that, so that twenty percent that we can receive for admin? But every municipality receiving those services also recoups the same twenty percent?
Correct.
But we're the only ones who actually have that overhead that's legitimate?
So I mean, the other ones have legitimate overhead too, right? So the, the planning process can be considered a cost of the. The building process, so you have certain justifications, but we do have. We obviously have more administrative costs than those other communities have. Um, I will say that the other communities are, are struggling, so they put their twenty percent into a separate fund. Um, to justify that, and I know Ada and Grand Rapids Township are both sitting on a bunch of. Money in those funds as well because they haven't been able to justify the. Uh, the costs are coming out of them.
So. Our admin costs are legitimate of our twenty percent, there's. Are, are, ours are much higher. The only thing too is if, and this is just something to think about. I agree with what Tom is saying. Down, but our priorities and ours, it's, we serve the residents of Cascade. So the bigger this, and I'm, it's, it's just a fine balance because you don't want to have to start, our job is not to consider keeping a business. In business, does that make sense? That's it, that's a potential distraction where our priorities can get. Get, because I don't want my, I was, I ran. Get, because I don't want my, I was, I ran to man, to, to serve residents. I don't want on the side, well, now we got all these employees in this business over here that's for profit, but not for profit. We got to keep. Like you said, it's a potential distraction.
And then I would argue that there is, there is benefit to the residents of Cascade. Just like there's benefits to the residents to all the other communities as well, right? So I came from a community where. We had our own building department. We didn't partner with anybody. And we did not generate enough revenue from the permit inspections to employ a full-time building official. Electric inspector, mechanical inspector, plumbing inspector. So in that case, that community actually contributed general fund. It was the other way, right? So not only did they spend all of their building permit money on those functions, but they spent a general fund money on it as well. So we're now in a situation where. You know, you don't have any general fund money going towards the building department. Not only that. You know, even with the amount of permit fees that Cascade Township brings in specifically. We would barely be able to cover most years of building official and one each of the inspectors. So now we can have a building official, we can have two commercial building inspectors, we can have three electrical inspectors, we can have two. Plumbing inspectors, you know, and now all that cost is, is contained within that department. So if. Mechanical inspector goes on vacation, there's another mechanical inspector to step in and do that inspection. So. There is, you know, we have to provide building inspection services. There is a benefit to our residents. The residents of all the partner communities that you get to have this department, this robust department. Where we can turn over an inspection in a day. You don't have to wait, you know, three weeks for an inspection. And all the costs for that are contained within and paid for by building, by permit fees. Which even though we raised them are still lower than all of our other communities around us.
You raise a good point because I've got a younger brother who lives up north. And for him to get inspections when he did his house, because he lives in this small township that has to. He had no control. He had to wait like three months. To do things, to get an inspections in, so then they could do the electrical lines in. Because they have to source it out to, to, you know, they don't have the service like that, that we have. And, and I said, how could that be? We do ours and, you know, like that. Well, we're a charter township. We have the skills, like you said. So I, I, I can really see the benefit now, looking at what he went through for months and months of waiting.
But I don't want to discount the fact that the, the fund balance is concerning, right? We need to figure out a way. You know, we cannot continue to just accumulate fund balance all the time. So there is a solution that is needed there and we'll try to figure that out.
There is. I also don't like the idea that it's just Cascade Township on the hook for any losses. So once we burn through this surplus and we have to start throwing money at it. None of our partner townships or these other townships that we serve, they have no skin in the game. They're just going to sit there and say, hey, you guys keep throwing money at it. You need two point four million dollars. To run that department for one year. If we go into a four-year downturn, we burn through that million and a half extra. We're on the hook.
And they're not. Yeah, but Timmy, we'll react before that. We won't wait for four years to. We'll close it down. We'll, we'll, like, like Ben said.
No, you can't.
Yes, you can.
It will, it, it, it's whole thing is, the whole thing is structured so that this fund carries it through.
Right. But, but as Ben pointed out, if it goes down to where somebody's doing two to four inspections a day versus eight to ten. Then was, and we, and we see that's a long-term trend, then we start skimming back to reduce our liability. It, it's, it's, you know, it's, it all makes sense.
It's not a benefit to our residents to be happy to have this hang over their head. Possibility of running out of that money. It's not a benefit to our residents. They have all that money sitting there and no use for it. Other than we're going to burn through it when there's no work to keep the guys unemployed.
But to be fair, there's never going to be no work, right? I mean, there's, there's never just going to be, you know, complete stop of that, right? But the idea of keeping that fund balance. Higher than you would keep some of your other fund balances is it gives you time to make, time to make those decisions. I mean, if we, Ryan and I have conversation at least once a month about, hey, what's the industry saying? What's it looking like? I mean, we're not going to burn through an entire year of reserves before we're trying to figure out what that, that next iteration looks like. That's.
I just have, I just want to look at it different here that maybe it's structured. Maybe we can't use inspection fees. But maybe we could lower those and put in a service fee or an application fee. Or whatever.
We're assuming the risk fee.
Yeah. That is not under those state statutes. This is that those have to be spent that way.
Tricky.
I'm just saying there's more than one way to look at this, and I don't like it that our residents are on the hook for any deficits. And I don't like the idea that we have a huge surplus and it's only there to burn through.
For to maintain the building department in a bad.
Yeah.
That's not.
I don't think.
That's not how businesses run.
It's not how business run. That's not, that's not even. It's just not right. So that's my two cents.
So that's all that I have, you know, just kind of. To talk about the fourteenth as well. One other thing that we'll come in front of the, the board with, and we talked about it a little bit. The last meeting was some potential, not building department, but some other fee increases. So our cemetery fees are low and we have some recommendations for that. The Parks Committee actually made some fee increase recommendations and just clarifications at their meeting today. So. We'll have some, some minor fee updates from the, the ones at the Parks Committee. I think you guys will look at them and still agree that they're, they're probably on the low end. The idea is we just kind of, they wanted to quote unquote, right the ship this time around. And then once they do some of their updates at the rec park and get some of the fields back in pristine condition, I'll probably ask for another raise for those. The cemetery fees will bring us more in line with what other communities are charging and what our expenditures are in the. Cemetery department.
Do you think that will just be a policy update?
It's just, yeah, just a fee schedule. So we pass our fees by resolution. So. It'll just be a kind of a one-page resolution and it'll have an update on the fees on the back of it, what they are currently and what we're recommending them to be.
Also, are we forgetting to cover?
Public comments?
Oh, sorry. I just meant in big discussion.
Just for your information, we've covered more this year with the budget process than we have since I've been sitting here.
Did you learn anything?
Yeah. Money is free.
You're right. We do have good problems.
We do.
You, you see so many municipalities that are in the hole. And I think it's due to the, the direction of this, this board and. The daily. Observant of. Employees that we got that say, hey, I don't need to spend this money. They do need to spend that one. I think we've got damn good staff. I'm kind of proud of.
Should we do an, should we up it from four percent cost of living adjustment to what you, what did you say, four point four, four point five? Or don't?
So again, the, so the issue is, right? So the, if you go just by the CPIs. This year would be three point three, next year would be five percent. So at the meeting last time, we talked about four percent, you know, mushing them together, four percent and four point three percent. You know, if you guys wanted to up it again, I know employees would be, you know, ecstatic about that. But the, like the conversation we had last time too, we still do have this merit rate, merit-based race pile as well. So. For the employees, you know, a lot of them just aren't getting the CPI increase. They're being recommended for some type of merit-based increase as well. But. I'll leave that discussion up to you guys. It is nice to be able to explain regardless of what the split ends up being, right? It is nice to explain to the. Employees that, yep, we already know what your cost of living increase next year is as well. So it's a little bit easier to. Understand four percent when you not know next year's four point three percent. I think what they don't want to have happen is this year be three point three percent and then next year be one percent or something like that.
Makes sense. Any other comments, questions, discussion for article four? Next public comments. Is there anyone online, Chrissy?
If our Zoom participant would like to. Talk, please raise your hand. I'll wait a moment during public comments.
You guys want to make it better if it's Ken or Jim?
Okay, I guess that's, he doesn't want to.
All right, article six.
Move to adjourn.
That's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, who adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.